...formation in cold dark matter or with cold dark matter. How many of you have cited that paper in any of your works? Yeah. How many of you have read that paper? Okay, okay. Yeah. So you know, right? And if you haven't cited it or read it, you've probably seen it cited or read almost certainly every single person in this room if you've read any paper on galaxy formation or cosmology over the last 40 years. So we all know about this paper and we know that it was truly foundation-building work. And we thought that it would be interesting this morning to talk about what they said in that paper and what that work maybe got right, what it maybe got wrong or didn't foresee. And then we'd like to follow up on that discussion with a panel discussion that will involve everyone in the audience on what the most interesting challenges and questions are in galaxy formation and cosmology for the next 40 years or 100 years or whatever. So I'm now going to hand it over to Sandy. I guess you're going first. Okay. Wonderful. Would you like to use this microphone?
Good morning, everybody. Wonderful to see so many old but at the same time so many new faces at this wonderful workshop. So I'm going to open with some remarks about this paper. Basically, what we thought we would do is summarize sort of situation, the thinking of the field as we started to write this paper. And I'm going to therefore discuss a series of early papers, precursors, that really related to galaxy formation, the cosmology part of it. Joel is going to follow me and do a similar exercise for the situation of particle physics, that is to say candidates for the dark matter. So speaking of dark matter, I got, started to get involved in this subject by writing a review with Jay Gallagher on masses and mass-to-light ratios of galaxies. And the upshot of this review, by considering the dynamics within the Milky Way, surrounding the Milky Way, local group, rotation curves, clusters of galaxies and so on, was to reinforce the growing opinion that there was a lot of unseen matter in the universe. We called it non-luminous in this article here, but later it came to be known as dark matter. So in a sort of unusual personal statement, there was a lot of evidence in the paper, but then we finished off with this thing called a coda. And those of you who like music know that the coda is the last little bit of the sonata form in which the whole ideas are sort of summed up and recapitulated. And this is like, reads like a manifesto actually, and that's how we thought of it. After reviewing all the evidence, it's our opinion that the case for invisible mass in the universe is very strong and getting stronger. And we think it likely that the discovery of invisible matter will endure as one of the major conclusions of modern astronomy. All right. Well, with that as background, the world was talking about dark matter. And another very important paper is this paper by Reese and Ostreicher from 1977. And what they did was realize that, let's think about proto-galaxies forming. They thought of them as being in hydrostatic equilibrium. They would therefore have to have a temperature and a density. And they looked at the atomic physics of that situation and realized that there would be a region of temperature-density space in which the cooling time would be very rapid. And therefore, objects like that would not be able to come into hydrostatic equilibrium because they would cool and collapse on the time scale that's very short. So that, there were other things in this paper which are, from the standpoint of modern thinking, wrong, but they get a lot of credit and are very widely cited for being the first folks to put forward this diagram. There was also a paper at the same time similar by Joe Silk. So another foundational paper about the same time, 1978, is this paper by White and Reese which took the Reese-Ostreicher concept of cooling and introduced for the first way in a quantitative way, the concept of hierarchical clustering. That was what was missing in Reese-Ostreicher. So now we're thinking about objects that are small, that are growing by hierarchical clustering, and the structure can or cannot be wiped out as the larger structures merge. But we see galaxies over a wide range of masses, so it looks as though the structure is not wiped out. And that leads to the conclusion that somehow there are these big, large, invisible fluffy halos, they merge, but within them are these baryonic nuggets that survive. So there, they introduced the thought that most of the material is condensing into small dark objects. And they coined, to my knowledge, this is the first use of the word dark matter, which of course is now ubiquitous. Okay. Another very foundational paper, Fallen et Stathue. They took the notion of a large dark matter halo and considered that the baryons would dissipate. Why? Because they're cooling according to the Reese-Ostreicher cooling curve diagram. So angular momentum of the baryons would be conserved, objects would fall in to a smaller radius and take up residence there, okay? And they computed a bunch of models and they found that as long as a condition was observed, you could wind up with the observed flat rotation curves which were just coming into observational prominence at that time. And the conclusion was that if, supposing the baryons are some percentage, like one-tenth of the total mass, if you have a dark matter halo that's basically isothermal, then the collapse factor of factor of 10, 1 over 10, would give you approximately a flat rotation curve. So that was very, very important realization. Okay. And I'm almost finished with these early papers. I'll include one paper by me. This was the Vatican conference. And separately, but very influenced by the White and Reese paper and Fallen et Stathue, I was playing with the idea that there would be a very, very close correlation between the properties of galaxies and the proper, visible galaxies and the properties of their halos. And so my conclusion was, well, I'll come to those conclusions later, okay? Okay. So I introduced this diagram and you'll recognize the coordinates, density and temperature, those are the coordinates from Reese and Ostreicher. And there's the cooling curve region for zero metals but solar metals, slightly different regions. And so I decided that I would put actual galaxies and clusters of galaxies in this space for the first time. And indeed, I confirmed the suspicion of Reese and Ostreicher that clusters and the galaxies would lie in different regions, rather nicely on opposite sides of the cooling curve. The galaxies are the structures in which their structure is influenced by collapse and cooling, the clusters are not like that. And I furthermore saw that there was a correlation there with morphology. And so I suspected that there might be some relationship between the properties of the halos and the morphological properties of the galaxies. I didn't go beyond that. But my other big conclusion from this was to note the mean slope between the groups and clusters and the galaxies. And I put power laws for original density fluctuation spectra. And N equals 0, white noise is the steep one. And I didn't know too much about particle physics or the Harrison-Zeldovich spectrum at the time. White noise seemed like kind of a, you know, standard, that's how you get fluctuations, random. But I could see that that would not work, that white noise did not have enough power on larger scales. It's too steep in this diagram. And so I opined that somehow the actual density fluctuation spectrum must have more power on large scales than white noise. And of course, that was satisfied later by the Harrison-Zeldovich spectrum. Okay. I made another point in this paper. I was thinking about dissipation and what it would look like. So the line is what the dark matter halos are doing in density and temperature. By the way, T is a dynamical temperature. It's related to the orbital speed roughly. T is 24 times v squared, where v is in kilometers per second. And here we have halos that are imagined to cluster without galaxies around, along that line. And I was thinking about two different versions of the way things would settle. One might be very rapid, in which case we have a very rapid decline, that's the line to the upper right. Or as the halos are growing, we might have a gradual sinking of the baryons, and that was the dashed line, lower line. And I'll have more to say about what the data are actually saying about that in just a minute. Okay? So here is another paper that I, this was the Vatican conference in November 1981. I went to a conference two years later at CERN, which was a very wonderful conference. It's the first time I heard about quantum fluctuations generating density fluctuations. By this time, I was collaborating with Joel and George. And I was able to actually put their version of the dark matter density fluctuation spectrum in the diagram. So that was a first, at least for me. And we, the three of us, were already thinking about a second coordinate, namely not only the mass of the fluctuation, but whether it was a strong over-density or a weak over-density. And we described that using the term n sigma. And we could see that higher density fluctuations, higher over densities, would tend to produce galaxies that are more condensed. And we were beginning to wonder to what extent that spread in galaxy densities was due either to different amounts of dissipation or to different starting conditions from the halos. So that's how things stood with me at that time. And now I'm going to hand this off to Joel, and he's going to give you a similar review of particle physics. Okay, Joel?
Okay. So I was coming into this field from a particle physics side. I had helped to create what we now call the standard model of particle physics. And I was starting to do calculations that had to do with particle astro. For example, the first use of field theory at finite temperature, not zero temperature, but high temperature, to calculate things like the A rate of the neutron. That's an important thing, that's part of the big bang of the synthesis. So this was a very important paper that I think we fairly quickly realized was going on. But there's a key idea that Zeldovich had been pushing for some time. So Zeldovich had the idea that the fluctuations would have a certain characteristic spectrum. I'll go into the details of that in a minute. It had already been proposed by Harrison and also by Peebles and Hume. But since Zeldovich wrote the shortest, maybe the most convincing short nature paper on this, it's often called the Zeldovich spectrum. And the idea was that the fluctuations have a certain power law spectrum, and in addition that they're adiabatic. And that means everything fluctuates together. The densities of different components of the universe all fluctuate together. As against, for example, isocurvature where in fact they compensate each other. If one's fluctuating high, the other goes low. So Zeldovich's idea was they're adiabatic. He first considered having fluctuations be in an ordinary baryonic universe. But by 1980, it became clear that that would not work. The reasons that I think George is going to explain, his contribution here, but I won't go into the details. But it had to do with the fact that the cosmic background fluctuations and cosmic microwave background were already known to be smaller than 10 to the minus 4. And that turns out to be fatal for a baryonic universe. And in the early 80s, physicists in Moscow thought they had detected evidence for neutrino mass, the electron neutrino mass of around 30 electron volts. And if that were true, the neutrinos would have been the dominant phenomenon in the universe. And in this paper, which summarized some earlier work, Zeldovich, Sergey Shondarin, who sadly died just a few months ago, and Jan Linestov showed that dark matter, a top dark matter dominated universe, that's what we later on called the neutrino-dominated universe, the neutrino's a relativistic neutrino universe, would have the ability to form a structure and still be consistent with the upper limit on the cosmic microwave background Zeldovich did assume, so there were many other ideas that were popular at the time. The mixed mass universe by Charles Misner, Jerry Ostreicher was pushing bigger and bigger explosions to explain the bigger and bigger voids that people had been finding. But the key idea that me, George and I bought from Zeldovich was that the fluctuations are adiabatic, with a characteristic spectrum that we call the Zeldovich spectrum. First, we worked on what's now called warm dark matter. And then with Sandy Faber and Martin Reese, cold dark matter. And a little aside for the people here at Santa Cruz, our mascot on this campus is the banana slug, and they actually live on the UCSC campus. If you walk around here in the damp season, you almost trip over them. So dark, cold dark matter is matter that moves sluggishly in the early universe. That was the terminology I always used. My first paper that was relevant to this was this one, the Heinz Palels. And it was very popular in those days to think that the next discovery in particle physics was going to be supersymmetry. It's a beautiful idea that as far as we know, might still be right, but no evidence for it has yet been found, only indirect, in fact, very indirect evidence. But what this paper pointed out for the first time is that if supersymmetry were right, then it provides a natural candidate for the dark matter. Because in supersymmetry, there's an R parity, a multiplicative parity. And all the super, all the ordinary particles have super partners. So the electron would have the selectron, electrons are spin a half particle, the selectron would be spin 0. And it would be R negative. And the photon would have, and the graviton would have the photino and the gravitino, those would be spin half, spin three halves particles. And whichever one was the lightest of these R-negative particles would be stable, because R is a conserved quantity. But because it's multiplicative, if two of them come together, they can annihilate. So those ideas were in this paper. And what we said was basically that we could work out in detail, for example, the gravitino. And we showed that it could have a mass as high as a kilovolt, 1,000 electron volts. And that would lead to structure formation on scales down to galaxies. We didn't actually say that it would lead to structure formation down to galaxies. That was in this paper, because George Womble and I had been investment partners. His office was just two doors down the hall from mine. Fortunately, UC Santa Cruz, the physicists and astronomers are all mixed together. Brilliant. It's still true to some extent. We bump into each other all the time. And with George, we worked out what would happen in the universe with gravitinos with mass of, say, a kilovolt. And the answer was that you'd make dark matter halos with galaxies as massive as the Milky Way and the 12 solar mass halos and above, you'd make dark matter halos for groups and clusters. But you wouldn't make dark matter halos smaller than that because the free streaming of particles of mass of kilovolt would wipe out those fluctuations. Jim Kiebles responded to our paper, it was one of his first citations, by saying, hey, why just consider only a kilovolt? What if the mass were bigger than that? And the key thing that he did in this paper was to work out the cosmic microwave background fluctuations. The paper wasn't entirely right. He left out the neutrinos, for example, which are comparable to the photons and the most important component of the universe in the early radiation era. But the key idea was right. And we also were then thinking, well, let's consider a more massive dark matter particle. And George is going to talk about this also, but let me quickly explain this diagram. So what this is doing is it's showing you the fluctuation amplitude on the vertical axis, log, and the log of the scale factor. Scale factor A is 1 over 1 plus B is a redshift. So minus 1 corresponds to a ratio of about 10, a ratio of about 100. And the universe becomes matter-dominated at a scale factor of about 10 to the minus four and a half. That's when the halos of 10 to the 15 solar masses are just coming inside the horizon. So this is showing you the growth of a fluctuation of 10 to the 6 solar masses, 10 to the 9 solar masses, 12, 15. And the key thing to appreciate is that those that come into the horizon, those matter fluctuations that come into the horizon in the radiation-dominated era, only grow logarithmically. The rule is that they grow as fast as possible, which is linearly with the scale factor, only if they're in the component that's dominating the universe. So matter fluctuations only grow faster than the matter-dominated universe. And that's, the consequence of this is that you get this piling up of fluctuations on scales that correspond to galaxies and then spreading out of fluctuations on bigger scales. And that's the cold dark matter fluctuation spectrum, delta rho over rho. So randomly placed spheres will generate delta rho, you take the average, delta rho over rho looks like this. And this is for omega baryon equals 0.1, omega matter equals 1, Hubble parameter equals 1, of course, we work out various variants of this. At that time, the early 80s, the US was having a serious economic problem that was called stagflation. So we coined the term stag expansion, which never caught on. Also, people stopped talking about stagflation for a while. Anyway, so, and just as Sandy was giving various conference proceedings talks, so I gave three talks in '83 presenting this work that I'd been doing with George. And in those days, you wrote up, you know, 20, 30-page papers when you gave these conference proceedings. So a lot of details are there. Of course, me to read a tremendous number of papers to sort of come up to speed. So just blowing up this figure to show you a little bit more about what it means. So that's the amplitude, delta rho over rho equals 1. When you get just slightly above that amplitude, you get spherical collapse. We all learned about this from Jim Kiebles' 1970 book, Physical Cosmology. And so the implication is that dwarf galaxies will start forming at redshifts of like 15, Milky Way mass galaxies about redshift of 10, clusters start forming at low redshift. And those are just average dwarf galaxies, Milky Ways and clusters. The ones that form early would be two or three sigma fluctuations, and they would be forming at even higher redshifts. So we were perfectly aware of this. And Sandy showed a version of this figure, and this is the version I showed, must have been just about the same time, in '83. And the difference is that I put these little tick marks on to show the mass, the log of the mass of the halo, you know, the solar masses. So 10 to the 8 solar mass halo, 10 to the 12 and a half solar mass halo. This is with zero metallicity, this is with solar metallicity, those are these cooling curves that Sandy mentioned in Reese and Ostreicher, Joe Silk, also Jim Vinney on the same time. And the key thing is that when you have the cold dark, see, these earlier people knew that there'd be material that would be too diffuse to cool quickly. And material dense enough that it would cool quickly and could form baryonic structures, galaxies. But until you have the cold dark matter fluctuation spectrum, you don't know what the masses are. It could be anything across here, as Sandy showed, you know, it could be like this, it could be like this. George and I had worked out the cold dark matter fluctuation spectrum. And so we knew that the mass range for galaxy formation is somewhere around, for dark matter halos, 10 to the 8 to about 10 to the 13. We were getting that right. So we realized it was time to write this up as a serious paper. And that was the paper. And this is, I think, more or less what we looked like back in those days. So the paper, "Dark Matter Consists of Particles Having Negative Thermal Velocity Respect to the Hubble Flow and Having Non-Gravitational Interactions Weaker Than the Weak Interactions." Incidentally, the term dark matter was introduced by Fritz Wikki, "Gunkel Materie," he called it, in a paper in German in 1933. He had a much more detailed and really quite amazing paper in, I think, AJ in 1937 where he talked about gravitational lensing and all that kind of stuff. So I think Wikki is the one who coined the term dark matter. "Axeons," proposed, so this is a quotation, basically, a summary. So we talked in that paper about axeons proposed to avoid large CP violation and destroying interactions are a natural candidate for dark matter. Though why the supersymmetric partner particle, for example, the photino is another natural candidate. The remnant photons during complete annihilation in the early universe could contribute to cosmic density today. And it's kind of amazing that it does work out that you get just about the right density. But third cold dark matter candidate is black holes, and there are already limits, including lower limits. This is for non-disstruction of structures in galaxies and this is kind of over closing the universe. But in any case, non-observation of gamma rays from black hole decay. However, that's what this one is for. Anyway, so what we emphasized in the paper was that, from the point of view of cold dark matter, it didn't matter which of these things. They all were cold dark matter candidates. And 1983, around the same time as we were doing these conference proceedings talks, there was this paper by Simon White, Carlos Franch, who were postdocs with Mark Davis at UC Berkeley. And they did the first simulations of hot dark matter. And they showed that hot dark matter would look completely different from the universe we observed. You'd get structure formation on scales of superclusters, 10 to the 15 solar masses. And then galaxies have to form after that, and galaxies would be much more clustered than they really are. It just didn't look anything like the real universe. Now, this is getting into the paper, our cold dark matter paper, the paper of 1984. This is figure 1. So we summarized the arguments against both hot and warm dark matter in that paper. Hot dark matter predicts clusters form first, galaxies form later, as I just said. We argue that survival of dwarfs for orbital satellite galaxies despite the tidal force of a much more massive Milky Way shows that these low-mass galaxies must have massive dark matter halos. And I learned about this from a paper, two papers, by Lynn and Faber here at UC Santa Cruz. So they had made this point, and we made the point explicitly here in this first figure. The key point being that if you take the dynamical mass that they deduced for these dwarfs for orbital galaxies, hornax, these other seven dwarf galaxies around the Milky Way, that they have roughly the same dynamical mass, and/or and luminous, as Milky Way, as clusters, as small spiral roofs. And it's also true if you look at the mass-to-light ratio. So we argue that this is evidence that you need to have cold dark matter because warm dark matter would not have made these small-scale structures. So just summarizing some of the key things that we said in the paper. These are direct quotations from the paper. UV emission from massive or supermassive stars can photoionize remaining diffuse baryons, raising the temperature... raising the temperature, baryonic temperature up to 10 to the 4K. If such stars radiate at fractions varying from luminosity and longevity to photons, the entire baryonic medium can be ionized by a relatively low fraction of star. If the baryonic gas is reionized in system of total mass less than 10 to the eighth, the baryons become so hot that they flow out of the cloud, so you have to form galaxies less massive than that before reionization. But we already had all these ideas in 1984. In addition, free dive from non-gravitational processes would amplify the number density contrast of bright galaxies compared with the underlying density of dark and baryonic matter. At Z of order 10, the average density is highest for pancakes for later figure. This is where most of the earliest galaxies and rich clusters form, and these are the regions earliest enriched and metal. Radiation from these early galaxies and plazars and possibly popular stars are very massive objects, a popular idea in those days, could heat the gas in lower density regions, raising the G's mass, as discussed above, and suppressing small galaxy formation. We worked out in detail two different theories, an open universe with omega matter equals point two and a closed, a critical universe with omega matter equals one. And we said, we conclude that a straightforward interpretation of the evidence summarized above favors omega matter equals point two in the cold dark picture, because omega matter equals one is not implied. And we've shown that a universe with 10 times as much cold dark matter is baryonic categorized remarkably, but this is a good, good, good universe, if you predict the observed mass range of galaxies. Definitely understand, we didn't understand before this why galaxies exist, why they have the mass range they do. Now we began to understand that. Very favorable, also due to dissipation of galaxy heat. And it may also provide natural information for the differences in angle matter between elliptical and spirals. Matter picture seems reasonably consistent, large scale clustering, including super. It seems to be the best model available, merits close testing. That's how we ended our paper. I think this is your turn, George.
Take you through the calculations that we did and explain the figures in the paper and the conclusions that we were able to reach. Okay, now, first of all, we have to set up a physical model. Joel, do you have the pointer? So first, we have to explain the physical model. And I start off by saying, let's consider a spherical cull, and let me explain what I mean by that. This is not an in-body simulation. We basically made the assumption that there were fluctuations and we treated them as spherical fluctuations. And in particular, we used a Tophat model. We assumed that fluctuations existed only within a certain radius. And within that assumption, then, of course, we had to choose a cosmological model, and that means choosing the omega of the universe, choosing omega baryon, choosing the cosmological constant, which in the case of this paper, we assumed was zero, and choosing a Hubble constant. Of course, you have to choose the type of dark matter as well, and whether it's stable, et cetera. And of course, we investigated cold dark matter. And the models, the main model that we investigated was Harrison-Zeldovich spectrum of initial fluctuations. And although we did in the paper explore a couple of other deviations from that spectrum, and then, as I said, we assumed a Tophat model, that is, that fluctuations corresponded to a sphere of radius R. So it's a very gross approximation, but you know, sometimes these gross approximations work out better than you have any reason to expect. So let me, on this diagram, I want to point out the mass scales that are, the natural mass scales that gravity give you in the universe. And so what's plotted here first is a plot for baryons, what the G's mass is as a function of scale factor. Here, R of T means scale factor. And what you see is that the G's mass in the universe increases over time as the universe is radiation dominated. When the universe becomes matter dominated, which happens around here, little before 10 to the minus four, basically the G's mass in the universe levels out. And then, at the time of recombination, the G's mass plummets down to about 10 to the five or 10 to the six solar masses. And so in the early days of considering structure in the formation in the universe, people tried to make a big deal out of this. For example, I remember an early paper by Jim Peebles, which suggested that isothermal fluctuations of globular cluster sized material could form the basis for later galaxy formation. That turned out not to be the case. There's another natural mass scale, which is due to silk damping, and that has to do with the fact that for adiabatic fluctuations in the early universe, before recombination, if you squeeze a little spherical chunk of the universe a little bit, what can happen is that the photons in that chunk can diffuse out of the chunk, and therefore, since it's still, since radiation, this is the largest pressure, that basically dissipates those fluctuations. And so that provides another natural scale in the universe at around, I don't know, 10 to the 13 or so solar masses, maybe 10 to the 14 solar masses. So those are the natural mass scales that arise in the universe without thinking about dark matter. And it's obvious, none of them correspond to the structures that we see in the universe. So that immediately tells us there has to be something more. When we look out into the sky, we see galaxies of, I don't know, 10 to the eighth to 10 to the 12 solar masses, that's what we see. And clearly, simple universe wasn't giving us that, enter dark matter, as Joel discussed. And dark matter has an interesting property called free streaming, namely that a dark matter particle, if you try to clump it, might be able to, under certain circumstances, just stream away. Say, I don't care about the clump. The time scale for me to escape a clump is faster than the time scale for that clump to collapse. It sounds a lot like the G's mass, and so you can calculate the free streaming masses as a function of time. So for example, for neutrinos, it's this line up here, so a 20 EV neutrino. And what you immediately realize is that what's important is not the free streaming mass as a function of time, what's important is the maximum free streaming mass. In this case, around 10 to the 16 solar masses. So for neutrinos, without even doing any work, it's obvious that the scale that you expect to see in the universe is of order 10 to the 16 solar masses. If you want to lower the mass of the dark matter particle, as Joel and I considered, as Joel discussed earlier, you'd have to lower mass. So for a 1K EV particle, maximum free streaming mass is, I don't know, maybe 10 to the 11th or 10 to the 10 solar masses, and so on. So you can get a different scale out of, for the universe or for structures in the universe by free streaming. But as Joel also mentioned, for the, something like 1K UV case, then it's just very lucky that that would happen to fall in the range of adjuried galaxies. And hence, that's what's one of the nice aspects of cold dark matter. It doesn't have a natural scale associated with gravity, but it has to come from something This is just a slide I happened to see in my collection of old pictures. Somebody gave me that at the time, and so I just thought I'd stick it in here. So Joel already showed you this plot, and I just want to say a couple of more words about it. This is a plot of the growth in fluctuations as a function of scale factor. Again, on the bottom here, I apologize for changing rotations, but R refers to scale factor. And what you notice is that for fluctuations that have not yet crossed the horizon, this is showing them growing, basically the scale factor squared, that's not real or physical. For fluctuations larger than the horizon, there are several ways of describing those fluctuations. And they give different results, and the results are all equivalent because all that you really care about are measurable quantities. So it's like a gauge transformation, that you can go between different ways of approaching. This is a particular choice of gauge at a synchronous gauge. So when you see a curve that looks like this, a choice has been made, probably gauge two. And then, as Joel pointed out, the curves of smaller fluctuations that cross well before matter domination, they tend to flatten out. And that's what leads to the fact that the relatively small masses in later times, the fluctuation sizes are quite similar, whereas for larger fluctuations, there's a greater difference between the size of the fluctuations. So that led to basically figure two in this paper, in which, among other things, I show a couple of fluctuation spectra, one from AB equals one, another from AB equals point two. And they both look generally the same, with a faster drop off in the fluctuation spectrum at large mass. And basically, at small scales, it's kind of logarithmic, is the dependence on mass. And at large scales, I think it goes as end of the minus two thirds. So that's a general feature of these fluctuation spectrum. What's notable, however, is the relative size for an open universe versus AB equals one universe, where there seems to have been in the open universe, less relative fall off with respect to mass. But if you actually think about it with respect to scale or distance, the fall off is even much less, because in a low density universe, a given mass corresponds to a larger radius, and then an AB equals one universe. So that's one nice feature of this diagram. And on the top, we showed that some of the distinctions that Sandy and Joel already mentioned. This is a cold dark matter spectrum. White noise, which Sandy included in her diagram, looks here like that, and this is the distinction, particularly at lower masses, between white noise and the CDM spectrum, accounts for a major difference in terms of the kinds of predictions that would be made. And for neutrinos, it's just what we said before, I don't want to keep repeating it, but the neutrino fluctuation spectrum cuts off sharply, well around 10 to the 15 solar masses. And therefore, there's no natural formation at a given scale below 10 to the 15 solar masses. If our universe were neutrino dominated, then, and if we saw our galaxies, it would be because of a very complex process of breaking up of larger systems into smaller systems. So that's what you can glean from this diagram. So let me emphasize another point. Again, on the bottom, this is scale factor, and this is the growth of fluctuations versus scale factor. And a key point here is that in a cold dark matter universe, the baryons on a scale of galaxies that is below 10 to the 13 solar masses will have zero fluctuations at the time of recombination because of the silk damping that I mentioned earlier. So there will be essentially zero fluctuations in the baryonic material. On the other hand, cold dark matter doesn't care about photon diffusion, and therefore, cold dark matter fluctuations do survive the damping process that I mentioned earlier. So at the time of recombination, at this instant of recombination, you can have significant fluctuations in the cold dark matter, and essentially zero fluctuations in logarithmic scale, essentially zero fluctuations in the baryons. And then if you let the system go and let it evolve, even in linear theory, which is what's shown here, very quickly, the baryons fall into the potential wells created by the dark matter. And by the time you get to, say, a scale factor 10 times larger in recombination, it's clear that basically the two fluctuations have equalized, and the baryonic fluctuations are comparable to the dark matter fluctuations. So now, how do, you know, what do we do with this? You've already seen, basically, the models that we had created, or at least earlier versions of those models in Joel and Sandy's presentation. What we did was, we made some assumptions. We assumed that the spherical fluctuations are able to grow, and if they are indeed destined to collapse, they will reach a maximum size. After that maximum size, they'll start to collapse. And as a fluctuation begins to collapse, it heats up. Even the dark matter particles, and this heat is the wrong word, but their random velocities increase. And so in a sense, that corresponds to something like a temperature increase. So they will collapse, and generally, the internal kinetic energy of the dark matter particles due to relaxation eventually will be enough to stop that collapse and establish what is basically, establish what is basically a system that satisfies the virial theorem. And that'll happen after the collapse, after fluctuation reaches its maximum point of expansion and collapsed by a power factor of two. So that was the assumption that we made going into these calculations. So at that point, the cold dark matter is no longer able to collapse, and the baryonic component will cool. It will cool by emitting radiation within this dark matter halo. And to me, this is one of the important aspects of cold dark matter, because it provides a natural way for the baryonic material to fall inwards by emitting radiation, leaving behind a dark matter halo, a dissipationless dark matter halo. So you can get this core halo structure of galaxies in a very, very natural way. And one way that we described this, as you've seen, is to divide the plane of the density versus temperature plane for a galaxy in the same way that recent Osterreger did, by looking at regions where the baryons are able to cool and to cool quickly enough that they can cool faster than a dynamical time. And if they can cool faster than a dynamical time, then the expectation is that they will fall inward within this dark matter halo. As the baryons fall inward, the temperature at first won't change very much because they're still interacting with dark matter particles, but eventually it becomes self-gravitating. And once the galaxy becomes self-gravitating, if it collapses further, it'll start, the gas will start to heat up. So that led us to this picture, which you now see as somewhat more complicated form than we presented earlier. And so what do you see here? So there's a lot here. So first of all, there's a cooling curve. So we show two cooling curves through atomic material, one with solar metals and one with zero metals. We show two cooling curves through atomic gas. We've included a cooling curve due to molecular hydrogen, as well as a cooling curve due to Compton cooling. And so basically, those cooling curves divide this plane. And this is the plane again of temperature versus density, where the density is logarithmic and backwards. Higher densities are down here, lower densities are up here, that's what astronomers do. And so it divides the entire plane into those two regions, regions that can cool faster than the dynamical time and regions that cannot cool faster than the dynamical time. And on top of that, we have plotted the locus of where the halos will end up after they've done this collapse by a factor of two. And we've done that for the solid lines, which were for the omega equals one universe, and the dashed lines, which were for a omega equals point two universe. So those are the theoretical curves. And what do you expect? Well, one might expect, if you take a point, for example, here, say a two sigma fluctuation about this point, what you would expect that two sigma fluctuations, baryons to do at that point are to collapse, that is, move downward, and then eventually, when it becomes self-gravitating, move to the right, or, I'm sorry, move at a slope to the right, as it continues to collapse. And sure enough, when we look at where galaxies are, the galaxies that we see all fall on And sure enough, when we look at where galaxies are, the galaxies that we see all fall under that cooling curve. So it's completely consistent with this idea of collapse of the baryons due to radiation causing the structures to move towards galaxies. Also plotted on this map are, of course, groups and clusters of galaxies. What you notice about them is that they all lie above the cooling curve. So galaxies and groups and clusters are not systems where, at a systemic scale, the baryons have separated from the dark matter. So that is the essence of this diagram. We have plotted lines of constant mass on here as well, to see where we are. And what can conclude from this is that there's only a certain mass range in these cold dark matter models that can actually collapse. And the lower level of, the lower limit of collapse is probably of order under the seven solar masses, and the upper limit is about under the twelve solar masses. So this diagram gives a natural scale to galaxies, which, guess what, is very close to the scales that we see for galaxies. And to me, this was originally, and continues to be, the greatest success of cold dark matter as a way of describing the universe. And, you know, I still remember the excitement that Joel and I felt. One day, Sandy compared some galaxy data and gave it to Joel, and I don't know whether you misogynist or not, but you came to my office, Joel, and I remember that very well, because I had the theoretical curves that I calculated, and we, in those days, this was before computer plotting, we overlaid two transparencies, and we are just really delighted to see where these things actually fell. Mm-hmm, that's right. It was brand new data, indeed. I was joking when I said misogynist, Joel. So anyway, this is the essence of that figure in the paper. So another way we can plot the data is in a diagram of mass versus temperature. And by temperature, I mean exactly what Sandy described before, something equivalent to the square of random velocities. And the beauty of this diagram is that dissipation plays no role here. There's no dissipative role. So what you see is what you got, whether there's dissipation or not. And what's striking in this diagram, and you look at all the curves, and I know this is hard to read, is that the galaxies, which are these patch regions here, actually fall very nicely along the curve. It seemed to be a very good fit, and it seems to be roughly along the curve, mass going as, total mass going as velocity to the fourth power, which, as I'm sure you know, is an early approximation to Tully Fisher and Faber-Jackson. It doesn't have a third component, but at least it looks quite like it. And so, that's one of the most interesting aspects of this diagram that we've had. So we could draw some conclusions. And just to briefly summarize, we found that cold dark matter naturally explains, forma nation of compact baryonic galaxies, has the core within a much broader dark matter halo. The cooling and infall of baryons in less than a dynamical time is, if you use that as a criteria for the formation of galaxies that we can observe, it leads naturally to a scale of galaxies of about ten to the seven to ten to the twelve solar masses, in a natural way. Structures bigger than ten to the twelve solar masses are unable to dissipate. That is, if they form, they will not radiatively dissipate on a systemic scale. Subunits might be able to do that and form galaxies, but the system as a whole can't. And that can explain the existence of clusters and groups of galaxies that lie above the cooling curves. I just mentioned the mass going as V to the fourth, that we found as being a very suggestive result for the galaxies in the survey we used. And then I'll just mention a couple other things very quickly. In the underdense regions, like protovoids, it is more difficult to form galaxies as well, because in a statistical sense, if you are in a depression, if you are in a region which is underdense by random processes, just randomly underdense, it's more difficult to form a high peak in such a region, and therefore, you would expect less galaxy formation. And then, lastly, looking at a bunch of evidence, there was a slight preference that we expressed in the paper for a low omega universe, it seemed to fit the galaxy better. We did not analyze the non-zero cosmological constant situation, so we actually didn't go into that in great detail, but the hints were already there from this paper at the time that we did it. So we at least anticipated that possibility as well. And so, I think with that, I'm going to turn it back to Sandy.
Okay. So I'm looking at the time, and we're running over. have time to say in fifteen minutes, and you follow me, and we'll make it wind up at that point, okay? All right. So here we are at this diagram, and I want to, first of all, I thought it would be fun to put modern data in the diagram. So MANGA allows us to do that, because it's giving us integrated properties, dynamical measurements of galaxies. So here, and, you know, of course, we don't have digital versions of this figure anymore, so the only way I could figure out how to superimpose was literally to make use of the transparency function in PowerPoint. So here are MANGA galaxies, integrated properties, and I've colored by a bulged total indicator, B over T, and blue galaxies here are steroids, according to MANGA, these are more disky or regulars. And so, not bad, agreement with what we originally plotted. We can color here by star formation rate, confirming that these are the quenched galaxies, those star forming galaxies. And this one is interesting. Now I'm coloring by Yang halo mass. And this is important, because as we are going to see, I'm going to compare to TNG simulations in a minute. And the hallmark of those simulations, which I think is remarkable, is that the stellar mass to halo mass relation is very tight, and it actually doesn't vary very much as a function of redshift. So I want you to take this thought away, that according to a very credible simulation of galaxy formation, the link between stellar, galaxy stellar mass and halo mass is very tight. And to first order, you can think about this being the same all the way back to a redshift of three. It's not quite true, but almost true. So if you believe that to be true, you measure these Yang masses, these are about ten to the thirteenth. And so, this is telling you that these objects are lying in halos somewhere along this line here, which is a very interesting conclusion, okay? Now, I want to go on next and compare to TNG, but a problem arises, and I'm completely stymied by this problem, and it's fundamental. So what you've been hearing today is that these calculations use a Top Hat model. A Top Hat, as we assumed it, had two known numbers. First of all, the mass that was contained within the radius at some early time, and the overdensity. So this model says that if galaxies form from a selection of those overdensities, we expect them to be a two-dimensional family, at least, there could be other dimensions as well, a minimum of two. And those two are reflected in this plane. This is, you know, it's not a line in this plane, it has width. Sorry. And one coordinate is given by the original M, and the other coordinate is given by the overdensity. So keep that in mind, all right? Now, consider what we do if we have a more modern characterization of halos. We use the NFW approximation, and forgetting about concentration for a moment, then mass, radius, and velocity in the NFW approximation, you always put them together and get a density that's N times the density of the universe. In other words, with NFW mass, radius, and velocity, you have lost a parameter. And as a result of that loss, you don't know nearly as clearly where to put NFW halos into this plot. This is a very, very profound plot. So what am I going to do? When I take the TNG simulation, they give me NFW mass halos, how am I going to put them into this figure? I need a characteristic mass along the philosophy of BFPR. So what I did was, I observed, in order to make the next plot, I observed that halos have concentrations, they have cores, and I'm going to use the theory that we've developed about the development of typical halos with their core structure, core density, core radius, the radius of V max, and so on, to create a structure out of these halos with a mass and a radius. And once I do that, then I can actually adopt the picture of calculating a density and a dynamical temperature, assuming that the cores are in equilibrium. Okay, that was a little long-winded. I've been speaking about the TNG sample. It's a very interesting sample. I think it's credible in many ways, not every way. This is a plot of half-light radius and stellar mass. Why am I showing it? For two reasons. First of all, this simulation is making a two-dimensional selection of galaxies, so that is good. It is not true that galaxies lie along the line. At a fixed mass, there is some spread in ratings, okay? That is good. And then, the second thing that's good is that the quenched galaxies lie along this bridge line here. And if I compare this figure on the same scale to MANGA, okay, it's encouraging, the degree of representation, okay? Galaxies are lying about the same place, and there's this quenched line that sits here. Now, we know, or think we know, more about the origin of this quenched line. We didn't know anything about that in BFPR, but there's an emerging picture, which many people have contributed to, which says that broadly speaking, galaxies are evolving from left to right in this diagram, they're building their black holes, and we can calculate an approximate quenching boundary in this diagram if the energy that's radiated by the black hole is some fraction of the binding energy of the halo. And with our knowledge of halos, black hole growth and so on, the dead alignment looks just like this, and it matches rather nicely this quenched bridge line. So why is this important? This is important because it is this range in radii that is controlling central densities, that is controlling black hole growth, that later controls the location of this quenching boundary. And the quenching boundary in TNG is exactly the same physics as this, very nearly. The black hole growth is a little bit different, but the notion is still the same. If you look at the black hole masses in TNG and compare it to the central densities of the galaxies, there's a beautiful relationship, just, and it's very similar to what we actually observed. Okay. So I just wanted to let you know that there are elements of TNG that actually agree rather nicely with the properties of galaxies, and in particular, the radius mass relation, because that, for me, is the 2D space that we have to explain. All right. So here are the TNG galaxies. I'm coloring here by star formation rate. And here is my approximation to put their halos in the same diagram by using the core properties of the halos. And the agreement is actually pretty good. This is the peak of the density formation, and it says that there are three sigma over, way over dense, over massive halos here, and this is underdense massive halos there. And there is, broadly speaking, a correlation between star formation rate and position along this diagonal line. The points pretty much overlay on top of the data. There is this very odd feature that looks like this. I'll return to that in just a second. And now I'm coloring by the total halo mass in TNG, and you can see this correspondence, which I mentioned, namely, a very, very beautiful correspondence between galaxy mass and element that's banding in this diagram, which is extremely clear, okay? So all of that is rather encouraging. Now then, what I really want to know is, I want to use TNG to see how the galaxies are moving in this space. So now let's compare, I'm blowing up here. These red points are the ones you were just looking at at Z of zero, and now I've added the TNG points at Z of three. And what you see, first of all, is that we lie on this side. Galaxies are generally, these are the galaxies, are generally evolving in this direction. And the halos have gained some en masse from Z of three to now. Really interesting is the fact that at Z of three in TNG, there's this long tail down here, and that's a population of pretty massive, but very, very dense objects. And if you follow, I think I do that here. Oh, let me skip over that. Okay, now I'm going to look at three redshifts, and I'm going to plot half-light radius versus stellar mass for the three redshifts. Blue is high redshift, red is intermediate redshift, and these, this tail is very interesting. These are objects that are largely quenched. We would identify them with CD galaxies and massive clusters, okay? And now, if you look at the way objects are moving through this diagram at these three redshifts, there's sort of two and a half populations. One is here, and it moves sort of at a constant radius, maybe increasing slightly. There is a weak trend for large to stay large, and small to stay small, but there's a lot of crossing. That's very important. And then there's this second population, which is evolving downwards and then upwards here. So many of these galaxies that we see on the TNG bridge line actually had their origin at this lower corner, and those are the ones that I was pointing out in the previous diagram. Okay, so it's possible now to take these paths and transfer them to our original diagram. This is the density-temperature plane. And here's the kind of normal population going like this, getting more dense with time, that's because the masses are growing, the radii are not growing very much. And then here is this population which ultimately becomes quenched, looks rather like this. It's very interesting that at Z of two and three, we do see compact red nuggets. So these objects, while star forming would be called blue nuggets at that redshift, these would be red nuggets. I have no idea if this is literally correct. I have no idea if this is literally correct, but I think it's kind of an interesting explanation for many of the galaxies along the quenched bridge line today. That would be rather different, I think, from my horizontal picture watching the quenching boundaries, so it's really quite a different picture. All right. Whether or not this population is real or not, probably this trend is real, because the radii in TNG pretty much agree with our observation of most radii back in time. So I take this to be truth here, and I draw a conclusion. Galaxies are slowly diverging from their halos. Remember in my first remarks, I differentiated between, we make the whole halo and then we dissipate rapidly, as opposed to, we're building the halo and we're gradually building the galaxy. That was the dashed curve. So these tracks here strongly suggest that as the halos merge, the galaxies are gradually diverging away from them in terms of density. Now, I think this is associated with bolt building, and there's a great literature that says that bolt building is due to mergers, but I don't think so. I think what we're seeing here is slow secular evolution processes that are building up a central density in these galaxies, and I put that forward as something that needs further consideration in this. Okay, so this is the picture, I think, that TNG is telling us, the gradual dissipation. I'm going to skip over this in the interest of time. Okay, so let me, since I'm going to try to end my remarks here in my brief period, here are some final questions that I had, and I think the tightness of the halo-mass, stellar mass relation is really critical. What is driving the two parameters? If this relation is one-dimensional and depends on halo mass, then what we're looking for is a second parameter that is not halo mass. And I apologize to Fang Shujiang and Rachel here, and other people who, I think, have new results on this, and we will hear from them, I hope, at this meeting. Okay, so another philosophical question is, how does our formulation using M and delta M map onto the halo, the NFW mass and concentration plane? If indeed that's the right combination, I'm not sure that actually that is the right combination of numbers, but it's an obvious thing to think about. Not even mentioned up to now is the role of angular momentum or spin. And I'll have a couple more words to say about that in just a second. And then, an interesting question is whether we see all these wonderful correlations today, are they ancient, or are they rather recent? And I'll just reveal the fact that I think they're quite recent. The Hubble sequence is coming into existence basically after Z of one. I referred earlier to the fact that there was a lot of radius mixing in TNG before Z of one, and that kind of radius mixing is really going to erase all kinds of correlations with density and such. So I think probably, if we're thinking about the Hubble sequence or morphology, structural parameters, they're rather new, and we should think in those terms. Okay, so I don't have time to go through the rest of my slides. I'll tell you what I was going to do. I was going to look at real galaxies, these are MANGA. I was going to look at their properties in the half-light radius mass plane. And I was going to tell you some things that maybe you don't know, in the sense that there are systematic property variations in this space as at fixed mass. And remember, we are trying to explain why there's a range in radii. Is it difference in dissipation? Is it a difference in concentration? What is it due to? And in order to explain that, it would be wise to know all of these properties that vary in that direction, because they might give you a clue. To summarize, the Hubble sequence, as we know it, is up here. The, I guess Sandage liked to take pictures of big, beautiful galaxies. But there is a population of galaxies down here that we're now discovering with MANGA and surveys, which are less biased, and they are at the same mass, they're much smaller, almost a factor of 10 smaller, that's a thousand in density. And they are blue-centered, they're making stars in their middle. The star formation rate doesn't change very much as a function of this parameter here, which I think is miraculous, given that the native density of the object varies by several couple orders of magnitude at least. These have devocular light profiles, believe it or not, these are exponential. And I can say that, with one exception, TNG actually reproduces much of these trends, not perfect. And when you look at the properties of the halos and baryons in the simulation in which they go together, many of those properties are totally consistent with a difference in dissipation due to a difference in angular momentum, as opposed to a difference here that might be due to concentration. And I know I'm disagreeing with the thoughts that other people have stated on this, so there needs to be further convergence and exchange of opinion, and I welcome those conversations here. I think I've... Yeah, okay. So I leave you with this thought that this plane is familiar, this is Perikvita, this is the Hubble sequence, but this population of star-forming galaxies with devocular light profiles has interesting clues for understanding that could be natural. I'll stop. Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to that last one I showed. I think I have about 10 minutes, so I'll go fast. So I wanted to mention that in '84, after we finished the paper submitted, before it was published, I gave a series of lectures at the Durham Summer School on all the material in the paper and a lot more. It was about 150 pages, packed up, and 150, so it was more extensive. And it was basically an attempt to summarize what we knew about cosmological galaxies in 1984. In the old days, I was on sabbatical in class, so I have time to do all this. And in the old days, people actually printed reprints, and they kept getting requests for more and more of these, and they printed over and now they're not. And for years afterward, as I traveled to conferences, I would see people with dog-eared copies of this thing. So I think it actually had a paramount impact. So we're in the part where we're supposed to be talking about things that the '84 papers didn't foresee or consider. And of course, one of them was, as George mentioned, possibly the cosmological constant. So we said explicitly, omega matter equals one minus omega lambda, that is lambda over three, or groundless grid. But we assume here that lambda equals zero. The actual effects of the cosmological constant are, of course, make the universe stand faster. And Einstein knew that, that's why he introduced it, to counteract the effect of gravity. But it has many other effects, and one of them is that it changes the rate of growth of perturbations, explosive, but basically it's repulsive effect. And I think the first paper that actually worked out many of these other effects of a cosmological constant was this one, which happened because Oprah Lahav, one day in Jerusalem, asked me over lunch some questions about things he'd read in a textbook about cosmological constants. Turned out the textbook was wrong. I went home, I worked it out, I came back, and said, "This is how it actually is." I disagreed with the textbook, I don't even remember what the textbook was, but anyway, that book got us started on that paper. And of course, the accelerating expansion of the universe was discovered in 1994. I want to mention another review article that I just did last year. So I was asked to write a review article on galaxy formation in Lambda TVN. I annual reviews, not of primian astrophysics, but annual reviews of nuclear and particle science. I had given a series of lectures at the Nuclear Particle Science Conference. Of course, those people are always interested in failures of cold dark matter that can be explained by some new particle or new, anyway. So I tried to summarize all the key ideas, including what I thought were those big issues. There's a discussion of that in the last 10 pages of the... What I've circled in blue here are the things that we didn't foresee or consider. So this is a famous picture from the annual reviews of primian astrophysics on the certain black medium by Tomlinson and Deiblton work. And this detailed structure of the certain black medium, that there are gas flows, cold gas flows coming in, that there are outflows, which get recycled, some of which escape into the black medium, that feedback causes the galaxy to eject some of these, some which are recycled back into the galaxy. Those kinds of details are far beyond the thinking that we were doing. So we got a lot of things right, but there were tremendous amount of possibilities that was just way beyond what even rather forward-thinking people were thinking back in '84. Stars forming giant white globes now was known, but that massive stars' radiation winds and supernovas affect the star formation is not something that we appreciated. Supermassive black holes in galaxies send themselves to regulate and eventually quench star formations and radiation systems. We were perfectly aware that they were quasars, but we didn't know that they're important galaxies. Of course, we didn't know the structure of halos. Sandy, of course, says that she's using the inner part of the halo. One of the things that we learned back when Rachel, Jane Bulwark, Lisa Westphal, Valerie Mahler, graduated from here with me, was that the inner part of the halo forms first, and the part less than the so-called scale radius. So the full idea was this, that for radii less than the scale radius, it's a one-over-R potential, if the radii are larger than the scale radius, it becomes one-over-R2. The one-over-R part forms fairly early and doesn't change that much. The halo grows largely by accretion, and so the virial radius keeps growing, and the concentration radius, or R sub F, grows with time. But again, these things didn't turn right around now, not 20 years ago. And actually, another thing that all these useful people have realized is that all those early quote-unquote simulations weren't simulating dark matter halos. Every particle was identified with a galaxy or some sort of dark matter. It wasn't until the late '90s that we've had the capability to do high resolution simulations of dark matter halos in a cosmological context. It wasn't until 2011 that the era simulation, the first native realization of galaxy. So it took a lot of time, largely because of the inability to do super-high resolution simulation. One of the things that was discovered, though, quite early by Lisa Westphal, Simon White, and others, was halo assembly bias. So the first bias that in more massive halos in a more clusterful form earlier, that was known rather early, and that's just mass bias or halo bias. Assembly bias is every other dependence aside permanent, so spin, or concentration, or any other property of formation on. So this is an example from the Wesley Tinker annual reviews, that the red circles, the halos of the highest concentration, are more biased, but actually it's a mass-dependent effect. So that's another kind of a thing. I'm trying to do a summary of some of the things that we didn't foresee or think of. So another thing is that feedbacks suppress star formation. On lower mass scales, it's largely supernova feedback, on larger mass scales, it's largely AGM feedback. This is a sort of hand-drawn figure by Joe Syl. It's widely reproduced, so I figured I'll show it. Of course, Rachel, in one of our early papers, had a similar figure, but it was complicated. I wanted to show a really simple figure, so I'm not showing Joe Syl's version. So this is, actually, I meant to show another version that Sandy said I should show, although we're future celebrities, and I actually, I guess it's a different version, I put that one in. But anyway, what this is showing is, of course, the stellar mass, halo mass relation. So this is the stellar mass divided by halo mass on the vertical axis, halo mass on the horizontal axis. And what you're supposed to notice is that the highest that you get is about 3% of the halo mass turning into stars, and a halo mass of about 10 to 12 solar masses, these different curves with different redshifts. And the baryonic fraction is 0.17, way up here. So star formation is very inefficient, even in the halos, around the halo masses in Milky Way, where it's most efficient, it's only turning about 20% of the baryons into stars. And on smaller mass scales and larger mass scales, much smaller fraction. And there's a saying, on this side, it's largely supernova feedback, on this side, it's largely AGM feedback, and the supernova feedback is truly important paper that everybody needs to understand, is Dekel and Syl. Probably just two years after our 2005 or 2006, 1996. Ah, whoops. I did put in the, this is the, I just forgot to erase the previous. So this is basically making that point, the baryonic to halo mass ratio of 0.17, that's the cosmic. But the peak is only about 3%. I just forgot to erase the other one. Okay, so another thing that is relevant is the shape of dark matter halos, depends on mass ratio. That halos start quite prolate. This is the halo at redshift three, and the 11 or so solar masses, and then, as time goes on, that halo becomes more massive, but it also becomes round. Halos start prolate because they're located on filaments, most halos, and they tend to be prolate along the filament, and they're supported by anisotropic velocity dispersion, largely along the principal axis, this axis. So the mass is coming in, and it's the random velocity in that direction, which is much hotter than perpendicular direction. And as time goes on, the filaments get thicker, and the halos accrete more structurally, and they become more structured. There were many papers since then, but I think this paper in 2006, Lev and I, graduate student Alguet, but with many of my former graduate students, who often made that point. And this has an important effect on galaxies. Well-mass galaxies are dominated by dark matter, but prolate dark matter makes prolate galaxies. And this is from Raj Pankaj, Howan Zhang, et al. paper, following up on the Zhang and Trumak paper, and Vanderbelk paper earlier, now using J2ST data. And what you see is, for halos of mass, sorry, stellar mass, 10 to the 9, 10 to the 9.5 above redshift one, the vast majority of these galaxies are prolate. Above 10 to the 9.5 solar masses at redshifts of 1.5 and above, the majority are prolate. Now we know that this is true up to high redshift input to his culture. Everside Dekel, his former student Eva Bernroin, wrote this very important paper in 2006, where they showed that gas could enter dark matter halos as cold streams up until they cross this red line. Above that red line, there's a virial shock, and the halos, the gas, into the halo pot. And that can have several effects. One is that it can cause a bend in the star formation rate mass diagram, and Namioli Dadi and friends say that they saw that. Where that is actually occurring is this diagonal line, starting at redshift 1.5 and above. The bend at low redshift is this, that occurs at about 10 to the 11.6. And at higher redshift, this is the version, when you cross this line, as you come in, it crosses the virial shock. If you are below that, you don't have the virial shock. When you cross the virial shock, it takes longer for the gas to cool, so it slows the star formation rate. This may also be crucial for making them dis. That's what the higher simulations show. I mean, everyone has a discussion whether other simulations agree with the... much more than the bottom of the cluster. These are so massive that their coefficient will cause them that they survive, to reach the stem of the galaxy on a timescale of 2300 million years. So that's another way, Sandy mentioned, that you don't necessarily need mergers to make big bulges. These things will tend to form bulges. And then, last slide, one of the most interesting and sort of amazing things that have been discovered in the last few years is these galaxies with almost no dark matter. Peter von Beukem was in part of a number of these. And there's this particular system that initially just looked completely crazy, and it appears that there's a really simple explanation for it. So what's seen is a line of little galaxies. These galaxies have almost no dark matter, and these galaxies have a lot of dark matter. And the idea is that, just like the Bullet Cluster, this is the Bullet Wharf collision, there was a little wharf galaxy in orbit around this massive galaxy, progenitor two here initially found. It's hit by progenitor one, the galaxy falling in at high velocity. This is the remnant of progenitor one, so the dark matter and the stars go right through, but the gas gets lumped into various little lumps, as different parts got hit. And that's what forms these things with almost no dark matter. They also have big, bright, modular clusters, all of which formed at the same time, suggesting that there was some violent effect, that shocked, and then the boost. And detailed simulations of this by Jean and Tim and his group, several that are here, and other groups, are showing that these are really quite easy to explain. And one of the things I really like about this is that this really shows how important the role dark matter plays. By showing galaxies that don't have it, and anyway, so, and then, of course, in recent years, there have been many more of these possibilities of dark matter, self-interacting dark matter. Fang Shujiang has told us that maybe that's important for making supermassive black holes directly from the dark matter, quantum effects from low-mass dark matter, and so on. But I have run out of time. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Sandy Dool and George, for that fascinating presentation and lots of food for thought. Let's go to coffee. Let's please try to be back by the time on the schedule, 11:55, so that we don't run too late, and enjoy coffee, and see you back then.